Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board to order, please. All those in favor, all those that are able to, please rise to the platform. Mr. Boyle, will you lead us on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, listen, could you do a roll call?
Sure. John Boyle.
Uh, here.
Dan Asco.
Here.
Chairman, Robert Bishop.
Here.
And town manager, Tom Hutchinson.
Here.
Mark and Joe.
Excuse me.
I think there's three, just a quick comment. I love these three membered boards. Hit, hit. That's where it usually be.
Okay, moving on.
Were you laughing at me?
Minutes from June 24th, 2024, they have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the meeting minutes from Monday, June 24th, 2024, as presented.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say that.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconds, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just the fact that this is on the date when member Mark Strout made a motion to create a committee to build a new police headquarters. I seconded the motion. The motion was called for vote, it voted unanimously. And that was the end of the discussion. So I just want to point out that there's a lot of balls being shuffled on around here. And I think we got a concentrated on a core mission, which I understand is to be, is to build a new location, build, lease, or rent for the police department to have a date, have a date, have a date?
Have a date.
Something like that, a few. But anyway, I just wanted to go on record and say.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This is time to public to address the board. When any item on the meeting agenda for any matter or issue of the town, if you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company slash institution you represent. The public address to the board or segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair, discussion, or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair of the designee may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please attend in person. Is there anyone that wants to address any items on the agenda? Chair and members. Okay. Number six, BRTA Advisory Board, effective July 20th, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Tom?
Yes, the BRTA automatically requests the chair of the select board to be on the advisory board. Often that has been the chair's designate. And I know Mr. Boyle serves on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is their group that deals with funding that comes from the state, the transportation improvement program. You may also, in the past, have served on the advisory board. I'm not sure.
What advisory board?
Of the BRTA.
I am the current.
Oh, okay.
Representative. Excellent. Don't want me?
So you're on, you do two things for them then, right?
Only two?
You do the MPO and the advisory?
Oh, I didn't type.
I'm sorry?
I'm only getting. Hey, if Bob wants it, be my guest.
Oh, no, why not?
He wants to designate you again.
Designate you.
Come on!
Seriously.
Okay, that would be great because you're involved in the other one as well.
Yeah, well, it's totally different. It has to do with public transportation routes. This has to do with the, uh, Virginia County Regional Transportation Authority, also known as the Bus Company. And just for an update, they plan to expand their routes with routes after July 1st, with routes going to, uh, from North County to Greenfield and from Middle County, Central Berkshire to Northampton. I don't know how much the fee's gonna be or what the timetable is, but they're working on that. That was a surprise. And also, they have increased the double the number of routes in Dalton. Used to have one bus a day, went through, went to Hizzle, turned around, and came back. Now there's gonna be two. One little problem with the bus issue, and Alicia will certainly back me up. There's been a missing bus shelter for almost two years now. And in spite of the fact that Alicia hounds them, and Patty, over Patty, hounds them almost every day. They just give this to brush off.
Uh, that's, I think that's not a fair characterization. They have been trying to contact the owner of the property and were very recently able to do so. And I believe are continuing to try to work with the owner of the property that we would prefer to get the bus stop on.
You're talking about the Coroner Daily and?
Yeah.
But, Tom, that decision true, and Alicia won't. They granted permission. The owner's that property, Robert Deuce is her name. But she said, you have to contact the owners who leased the property of the ATM, which is the Great Light Credit Union.
Right.
And this guy at the BRTA was given his name, how long ago? Six, eight months ago? And he had to contact it and say, hey, mind if we put a bus shelter approximate to your ATM? Well, nothing's happened before.
No, he did contact.
Really? What'd they say?
We have not gotten a reply. So, so we are continuing to try to work on it. It's not that BRTA is not working on it.
Uh, I disagree, but anyway.
Yeah. Also, and yeah, I'll just, the Metropolitan Planning Organization is part of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, not the BRTA.
Yes.
But they're both transportation.
So a motion to designate, Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Is that in order?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we designate John Boyle as the representative of the town of Dalton to the Berkshire Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board, effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second that. Motion's been made in seconds, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Hey. Thank you. I'll try to get that bus shelter up.
Please.
Yeah, let's check in later.
Yeah, okay, well, no.
Information.
Alicia.
Thank you, you're checking with her too.
Yeah, alright.
Okay. Linda Galak to the Cultural Council, effective June 16th, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Mr. Hutchinson.
Uh, yes, unfortunately, she's unable to be here tonight, but she did attend the Cultural Council meeting that was just proceeding this morning. So, well, not just proceeding it, but late afternoon. So, but she didn't stay for this meeting. But I gather she is still willing to be on it after having attended meetings.
Yeah, she was, I met her in town hall one day, she said she's looking for it.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Linda Galak to the Cultural Council, effective July 16th, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion's been made in seconds, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, number seven, a fee waiver request for a Cona concession bathroom building project. I got a call from one of the people that are building this. This is being done, they're rebuilding the whole concession stand area and adding bathrooms to it at the football stadium at Cona. And it's all being done by volunteers and paid by volunteers. Uh, it's not a cost, single cost to taxpayers, nobody. They're doing it all on their own. And they just wanna know, they talked to the building inspector, the building inspector said he would waive the building permit fee if the select board approved it. So I'm in total favor of waiving it. So moved. Okay, the second?
I'll second for discussion, I'd like to know more about it. Do we often waive fees? I haven't really seen that in my time.
This is a basically nonprofit group, I mean, they're just doing it out of their own pocket. It's benefiting town Dalton, benefiting the school. And it's gonna be a big help if you attend the football games, you don't have to truck 200 yards to go to the bathroom.
What's the permit fee?
I have no idea what the.
300?
Probably 50, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, you can see what it was.
Maybe, can we get a written request for it? Do we have it on the record that someone's requesting it, or is this, I mean, I just, I don't know, I feel.
They wanna get going on it, because as soon as they wanna do it, as soon as we approve it, they can do it.
I just don't wanna get in the habit of, you know, casually waiving fees.
Nope.
Yeah.
You're right, Dan, but we could request it, Tom manager.
I'd be in support of it, but I'd like a formal letter, just a written letter to the select board requesting the waiver from whoever is organizing the building.
Yeah, but we're not gonna.
I don't mean to hold things up either, I mean, I don't wanna be the.
Yes, we'll hold it up.
Yeah, the.
That's trouble.
Our next meeting isn't until August 19th, so that's.
We could tentatively approve it.
How much is the fee, if anyone could tell me that too? Just to know.
Yeah. I don't know.
So Jeff, would you know what a fee, what they type a construction?
I'm not sure what.
I've never applied for one, so no idea.
Tony, Tony?
It's usually based on the cost.
Of the project.
There are various permits, plumbing or electrical would be added on, but it's based on the cost of the structure.
Yeah.
So charge a percent of that.
Yeah, these people would have to pay it out of their pocket in terms of student.
Doesn't sound like a small project, putting bathrooms in?
Do you know if the volunteers are paying for the materials?
Yes, it's all been donated, everything.
Hmm.
Well, it's gonna be, the savings will be much more than the cost of waiting in front.
Yes.
Savings to the taxpayers, I would think.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just would like to see it in writing to know what the cost of the permit waiver would be.
Yeah.
Well, it's probably gonna be, you know, estimated guess, maybe anywhere from 50 to maybe $200. The standard fees in the construction business for putting out a roof addition. As Mr. Peggy really said, there'd be a separate fee that might be back for the plumbing inspector and the electrical inspector.
Well, tell you what.
This is just sort of general construction, I'm guessing.
My no vote wouldn't hold it up anyways, so.
Okay. Okay.
And we just, you know, ask Tom to get some information together for us and email to us.
Why don't we get a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take a vote?
Yeah. We'll take a vote. All those in favor for waiving the fee?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote no, only because I don't have enough information. I would prefer a formal letter and an understanding of the cost, but that's why I'm voting no.
Boy, I can ask for a letter explaining the, yeah.
I'll take care of that.
Explaining the project and the effort and all of that. That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, I'd like to open this licensing board, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any others in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first one, approve multiple amendment application for VFW, change of manager, change of officers. Tom?
Uh, refer to Alyssa, our licensing manager.
So I have Jeff Lawson here from the VFW. Uh, this multiple amendment application is just to update the officers, which they should be doing annually, and update the new manager, which Jeff is applying for as previous one has left. So, everything appears to be in order, so.
Okay. I looked it over, it looks good to me. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application for a change of manager for the Dalton VFW and change of officers, directors for Dalton VFW as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made in seconds, is there any further discussion?
Jeff, haven't you done this before? Manager up there?
I have not been bar manager, I just took over as commander.
Yeah, you've been involved in the hierarchy of the VFW for a long time.
Well, we've been chasing licenses.
Yeah, remember last year?
Yeah, so it's finally come to fruition.
Okay, thank you for stepping up.
Okay. We'll sign this, please.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, thank you.
And I will take the opportunity to commend Alyssa for working with the VFW. All of the details have had to be straightened out. She actually put in a whole lot of work that somebody else might not have. So she really spent a lot of time walking through the process, so she did a great job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Okay, Alyssa, approval of transfer license from Shire Brew House LLC to Berkshire Culinary Group LLC.
Yes, we have Matt Madder on Zoom, and we have an attorney here with us. You may have seen the article about Shire Brew House changing over, what they're doing in there. Um, so I received this last week, and everything also looks in order here, so.
Yep.
So, do you have any questions for us?
No, sir, just here at my office, prepared the packet, the client's on Zoom, if you have any questions, here should just be a switch.
What's your name, sir? I didn't hear it.
Darren Lee.
Everything looked pretty well in order, there's pretty extensive documentation of everything here.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Is this, Mr. Lee, is this gonna be the name of this place now, the Berkshire?
Uh, it's gonna be doing business at Shire Beer Hall.
Shire Beer Hall, okay, that's gonna be the name?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And.
If you guys can hear me, I just wanted to, this is Matt Madder, dropping in right now off of Zoom. We're not looking to, we're looking to change the name, but it probably won't be until winter. Uh, we're looking to dissolve Shire, it was Shire Brew House and Shire Beer Co. LLC. Uh, and I am officially, I signed a purchase and sale agreement to take over what's left of Shire Beer Co. And we'll eventually rebrand and rename under a DBA, but Berkshire Culinary Group will be managing the license, no matter what the name is. Uh, that, that is something like currently, we do our sale under Shire Beer Hall when somebody gets a receipt. And I'm sure, can I have Shire in the name? We just have not formalized the name, we just have to start the process of getting the permanent license transfer over so that we can have it, and then when we rebrand, we'll go back to the town and come back to DBA accordingly.
Okay.
Guess that sounds legal.
Follow the DBA.
You have to have a name, because I read the paper, you hadn't chosen the name yet. I think you have to have a DBA name.
The license name would be under Berkshire Culinary Group.
Yeah, the name of licensee, Berkshire Culinary Group LLC, DBA Shire Beer Hall as it's presented, so that's what we'll approve today.
There is a process to change the DBA name.
With the town court, correct?
No, right here, there's license board, but there's a fee.
Okay.
I forgot what it was.
The liquor license name itself, that wouldn't change, it would still be under Berkshire Culinary Group.
That's right.
Yep.
I have done several of these over the years. We, I managed Jiminy Peak for 13 years, and we had four liquor licenses on the premise. And it was all under our management company, and it didn't really matter the name of the establishment. We would certainly fill that in with either Hancock or Leansboro. Um, and that's, and that would be the plan going forward for us.
Yeah. As I say, it's almost positive. If you change the DBA, you have to get the approval of this board, and there's a fee.
I mean, it would be Shire Beer Hall, that's what's gonna be on the tickets forever. Um, that, that would be, when you, when you walk in and you pay with credit card, your bank account would see Shire Beer Hall on it as the merchant.
So we'd like to go with that, if you want to rebrand, whether you, if you come here, you will, but if it's a certificate of your license, it'll be.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the transfer of license from Shire Brew House LLC to Berkshire Culinary Group LLC as presented.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconds, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a few more questions.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thinking about how to frame this question. This business is a tenth of the stationary factory.
That's right.
So you're having a lease.
There's a lease.
Yes, in here?
Yes, it's in there.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't had a chance to get in. I just wanted to ask it, they signed a new lease.
I know the lease is being circulated. Matt, I had a note from Tanya, the lease was being circulated, there's a draft in there for you, so you know the term. I do think we're waiting for execution, or final execution, if it hasn't happened yet.
A new lease, in other words.
Correct.
For a different timeframe. This one was probably due to run out anyway.
So there's draft lease at number 10.
Yeah.
To be executed at time of approval, so you approved the license, I don't know what the holdup is, perhaps the lessor wanted the license in place
so that they know they have a higher quality tenant, et cetera, I'm not sure, but, you know, you don't wanna lease someone without a business or a license, right? So that's the main thing.
Just gotta copy the lease here.
Hey, Dan, what page is it?
It's the last exhibit of the application.
At the end?
Yeah, very end.
Alright. Shire Beer Hall.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm all good, Bob.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
None from.
Matt, you good?
Yes.
Sir, you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved.
Thank you very much. Attorney Lee, thank you, Mr. Madder.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to close this licensing board?
We got one more item.
We get.
There is one more.
Yes, one, yes, thanks.
Oh.
There is, there is one more, and there's actually some interesting history about this, which Alyssa will tell you about.
Uh, yeah, a couple of months ago, the state fire marshal stopped in and was wondering if we had land licenses on file for the businesses in town that have flammable fluids, which we usually do the annual certificates. But no one knew anything about these land licenses. Apparently, in 1919, in Boston, there was a molasses disaster, and we should have had land licenses since then. No one knows anything about them, so when we sent out the renewals this year, I asked people to update their land license application, which we didn't have the originals, but now we have land licenses. If we could just sign them, we'll be good to go. A hundred years later, we're good to go.
Do we need to vote on?
Uh, yes.
So vote on the renewals and then signature.
The renewals, we already did. This one is just updated land licenses.
Alright, good.
Alright, well, for the record, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 locations, Dalton Food Mart, Inc., Cumberland Farms, Inc., Lipton Energy, Oconna Country Club, Dalton Highway Department, Mast DOT, and Crane &amp; Company, Inc.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh. You're too efficient, John. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the land license applications for flammable liquid underground storage tanks, effective April, uh, nevermind, I guess effective.
So these ones don't have a date, I'm sorry.
Gotcha, alright.
Sorry, you can disregard this date.
Alright. As presented.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconds, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We could sign these afterwards, this 6th of January, yes. Now we can close this licensing board.
It's interesting that Lipton Energy is on here as a, as a storage facility for fuel. I don't even wanna talk about the rest of this nightmare that's going on.
Yeah.
I move we close as licensing board.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town hall basement review.
Yeah, I'd like to call Jeff up, he's been working with a couple of different engineering firms, and we still don't have really a lot of resolution, but he can give you an update and maybe some suggestions for moving forward.
Alright, so since the last time we met, we had received the quotes for proposals for engineering from Hill, about the plumbing end of it and the ventilation end of it. Given that the, you know, those prices were a little bit higher than we were expecting them to be, I felt this due diligence to look around. I got a quote from Media M Engineering. They had a proposal for, I didn't get a quote for the plumbing from them, but just the ventilation. And it was for $37,000, which is $10,000 less than Hill's quote or proposal. But there's a few things in there that they didn't have included that Hill did that probably drives that price up, to be just about comparable to Hill's. One being, um, any extra site visits during construction. And also, they did not provide cost estimates, which would be an additional fee. Cost estimates for the proposed work, which they didn't provide. So, that's where we stand there. I have, I talked to Hill Engineering again today, and I just got this stuff from Media M at the end of the week last week. And we've also, you know, and talking with the idea of where we wanna go moving forward. That, you know, the bare bones would be, obviously, we discussed ERV fresh air ventilation system, which does nothing but exchange fresh air for stale air in the space. But we had also thought, well, if we're gonna go that far and spend that much money, how much more would it be for a full electric ducted HVAC system relative to heating and cooling? The newest word we've gotten is that those two systems would likely have to be side by side and not run. You know, we would be able to replace the fresh air ventilation with an HVAC system. So there's a lot of sort of question marks in the air on how we wanna move forward and what the best way is, because money is and how much money we wanna spend, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the last conversation I had with Hill this morning was they agreed that, you know, because even when they gave us that initial quote, he was like, yeah, this is a little high, and this is, but this is why we're not sure what we're dealing with yet. So he agreed to provide me with another proposal, which is, would be just a little bit more like a fact finding sort of thing. Let's look at these options, let's look at an ERV system, let's look at a full HVAC system, maybe get a few cost estimates for those. That way, we can be fully informed on what we wanna do for, for spending all this money, $47,000 for engineering ventilation system, and then we still need HVAC down the road, and we still, there's just a lot of moving parts here, so it's a little tough to pin down what we could, should do.
It would help me myself personally if you got the whole package, like for the heating system, including upstairs, downstairs.
Okay.
And like for every system.
Yeah.
Yeah, the running rate.
And the plug. And then, you know, separate costs too, like doing.
Yeah.
So we can choose, we can get the whole picture, whether it costs the whole picture or what we can afford.
Okay. Okay.
I would keep on getting those.
Jeff, it would be, uh, out of our league to assume that because the engineering is thirty-seven thousand, that the project cost would be around three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand.
It's a reasonable seat of the pants, that's for sure.
Yeah. So they're, uh, kind of a jump on what we're doing here, Bob, not going to be cheap.
No.
Yeah, and that's sort of, I guess, I guess I was looking, I was myself, I was looking for a little clarification on how to move forward, because there's a lot on the end.
I just don't want to find a patch here.
I don't want to waste any of this time getting all these estimates.
Of course, as well, trying to fix the patch, so.
So what's Hill, Hill proposing? Do you have a proposal for them for that alternate?
I don't, I'm, I should have, I should have had this.
Okay.
I just spoke to them this morning.
Yeah, forty-seven thousand.
What's that?
Their proposal is forty-seven thousand for the engineering.
Engineering for the ventilation system.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm just thinking that what we, what we might want to do is with, with that direction, come up with a written request for quotes.
Yeah.
That lists a very specific, um, you know, formula that we want them to follow and give us these numbers for these things.
You can do that, Tom, send it out like that form.
Yeah, and, and we can send that to both of the engineers, and maybe even none of them.
Get to the plumbing thing, if I recall correctly. It'd be a separate bid for the plumbing from the building out to the street by somebody that does that, but then inside the, the new bathroom area, so we, we require a plumbing contractor to do that work.
Yeah, we don't have the work, that work.
Separate, it was not one, one overall plumbing thing. So, yeah, Bob's right, we, easier for us to keep our handle on that, emerging, uh, total cost by having this plumbing, this ventilation, is there any other category fit?
Heating.
Heating?
Yep, there's no heat down there.
Yeah, they've got, yeah, yeah.
There's one heat in my attorney's office. We have, now, we have space heaters.
No, I did not know that, until right now.
It, it's similar to the upstairs in that the boilers on one end of the building, and by the time the steel gets to the far end of the building, there's not.
They had that problem upstairs for years, after they remodeled the town hall, because they only put up, uh, false ceilings and sheet rogues and dividers, but they didn't do any real structural engineering.
Yeah, uh, and I think there's also an alternative plumbing solution being explored.
Well, we have.
Is alternative, huh?
There was an idea possibly that we could maybe do, um, an injector pump that would handle at least just that, the dispatch bathroom, and we might be able to run that underneath the stairway and tie back in.
Hey, anything you guys could come up with, don't forget, we, I mean, we're in the process of, uh, possibly finding a new habitat, as we mentioned earlier, for the police department, but even in short term is, hey, you got to be honest, at least a couple of years. So, whatever you do to come up with to tighten this over, but not cut any corners.
If that works, then the police will go out, they can, they can bring that bathroom and save a ton of money.
We can nail the place over, so.
And, and, and even long term, having, having the basement available, you know, once we find better space for the police department, uh, having that available for expansion, more meeting rooms, more offices, uh, would be helpful to the Town Hall staff as well. And have, you know, and have it available.
Are we good with the plan?
Jeff, your office is down here, how does, how does this affect you?
Not sure.
Oh, no, don't ask, don't tell.
Don't ask, don't ask.
I'm going, I'm going to throw the police, I'll tie the whole basement to myself, that's what I'm going to do.
So, at the last meeting, we voted to authorize up to a certain amount of money for, uh, engineering for these projects. Uh, what do you need from the board this evening, other than just providing an update?
I don't, I don't think we have any more requests. I think, uh, the money that was, you know, approved in the last meeting should be sufficient for whatever we need to do immediately.
Thank you.
And if it's not, we'll come back in a moment.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to open is the sewer commissioners, please.
So moved.
For a second?
Oh, second. Trying to find the sewer thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sewer bid now, four, six forty-two Main Street.
Where is that? By Kelly Peggy's, or?
No.
The, uh, paperwork is in your, uh, is in your folder. And, uh, yeah, this was, uh, a residence was converted from a three-family to a two-family. That certificate of occupancy was issued, uh, almost, almost two years ago, and, uh, so the assessors have forwarded this, um, with, uh, with, uh, your recommendations. To approve.
There's an abatement of two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so motion to approve the abatement.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the sewer fee, uh, abatement application for Robert A. Hyde and Trevor Burgaro, six forty-two Main Street, on the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Uh, motion to close is sewer commission.
So.
Second.
Aye. A motion to adjourn, second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Don't say it's sewer commission. Okay. Okay, item eleven, proposed level-three EV chargers. Mr. Tony?
Yes. Lady, gentlemen? May. Um, Beckett, if I may, I just want to back up and, and just give a very brief, important where we are with the level-two chargers. Universal Electric has started construction, and they should have by the end of the week completed their end in terms of putting in the two chargers, four ports, behind the CRA. Uh, at that time, the electrical inspector will have to sign off. That sign off will go to Eversource, and it is a question mark when Eversource will come and tie into the charger. It could be days, weeks, let's hope it's not months, so it's on its way. So we're ready, so to speak, and lines will be painted, the bullocks are in, bulids are in, I should say, and so that's where that is. I also met with Dave Callahan from Universal Electric, we want this site, and I'm meeting with Tom tomorrow, thank you, to write an application to Mass Department of Environmental Protection to also receive our grant money here as approved by the town meeting in May. So, that's sort of under a timeframe now, as I understand, I have to get some clarity, but basically Dalton may lose its economic justice status based upon income this year, so it may not be the full reimbursement. However, we don't have to go out to bid, so the project, I hope, will be done this year for the senior center also, and that'll be a sister site, much like the CRA, they'll be complementary. So that's that. In terms of level threes, level threes are the four hundred and eighty-volt fast chargers. I was Wayne May, and Todd and Yanko were kind enough to follow up or to get a lead regarding Torchlight, and that's a design-build company out of Ellington, Connecticut, I think you have a proposal in front of you, very complete proposal. Rob Fontaine is their spokesperson or salesperson, he came up, I met with him, another individual, we went to Pine Grove, and we went to Green Ridge, both sites that had been approved by your committee, and, uh, he then came up with those proposals. I will say that Livingston Energy, who we've been in contact with and discussions with, did not come through, so we could not reach agreement on that. I want to thank Tom and our attorney also for the work they did to bring it to conclusion, but we could not. So now we're on to this Torchlight group. Uh, they've been in business for many years, right in Connecticut, as I said. The bottom line with Torchlight is that, uh...
We have Earthlight.
Earthlight, I'm sorry, Tom, I'm sorry, I think it's not, Earthlight, I'm sorry, uh, Earthlight, is that, uh, basically, we will be making money if we install these. We don't just get it for free, but we can actually make a dollar. And if you go through, and I'll just go through very briefly in terms of the tax credits that were allowed. Uh, Pine Grove would come in at a bid of about, rounding off, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, there's a utility incentive of one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, Dalton would be liable to pay twenty-two-thousand, thousand dollars, uh, to start the project, eleven thousand midway, eleven thousand at the conclusion. However, at the end of the tax year, assuming it's, it's complete this year, and that's a big assumption, but if it's not complete this year, it would be next year. Under the IRA Act, we're entitled to thirty percent of the total cost, so Dalton, on one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars, would be, would be credited with fifty-thousand dollars. We would have only put in twenty-two thousand. We would have earned, we will earn twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we're making money.
If it goes after the first year.
After it's built, in the following tax year, we claim the credit, they send us a check for twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's for Pine Grove. For, uh, Green Ridge, the cost is a bit more, but basically, we're also going to get a check back into the tune of some twenty-two thousand dollars. So we're making money on these projects. The concern, the conundrum is, this has to be approved, uh, by the town, uh, so there'd have to be a special town meeting in terms of raising the monies required for Earthlight to go forward. I do believe one thing, Tom, and I took this upon myself after we met last week regarding this, I called Rob, and I said, "Look, Rob, what if we can't get the town to approve this? Would you be willing to have us sign over the credits to you?" And that is a possibility. And he said, "Well, I'll run it up the ladder," with, with, with his company. So, I'm hopeful that if there is a town, special town meeting, and you may have to meet, I guess, with the Vogue Ed in September, that this would be a proposal that I would like to make, uh, before the townspeople, and to have it. We have no fast chargers in Berkshire County, other than the Tesla banks down in South County. So, te, uh, fast chargers are really the future. I mean, you're going to charge up in thirty to forty minutes, and then you're on your way. So, in a nutshell, what you see before you, I thought was a, a great presentation, he's outlined where he wants to put the stations, these are four hundred and eighty-volt systems, dual ports, and they be metered separately, uh, much like the other chargers here or with the CRA.
Tony, is, is, uh, specifically clear, it has to be a town meeting, it can be approved by the board or something?
Yes, yeah. I would, that's what I'm, I'm assuming the town would have to approve the money, because...
Unless we decided to use ARPA funds or such a thing.
Yeah, unless it was ARPA funds.
Sounds great.
I, I'm in support of this, I mean, particularly when you look at the net cost after tax credit, depreciation, and incentives, which means we're getting paid to put these in.
Yes, we are. Yeah.
And, and the, uh, the key to this is that, uh, the federal government has realized that municipalities don't get tax credits, because they don't pay taxes, um, but they have provided an alternate means to give the municipalities the amount of money that, uh, a private individual would have as a tax credit if they did the same project, is that right?
That's correct. Thirty C, it's called thirty C under the tax code, and he's also given us references, I haven't gone any further, I just like to know, this is a thumbs up, I'll follow up with references, I'll follow up with a CPA I know in terms of, you know, the legalities of this with thirty C, but basically, uh, we're making money by installing these.
Be in support of, uh, continued work on getting this developed as a concrete plan to either present to voters at a special town meeting, or, um, this board to consider using ARPA funds at a future meeting?
I'm in favor of that.
Awesome.
Good one.
Great work, Tony.
Yeah.
I'll follow up.
Excellent, Tony, thank you.
Keep making us money, that's going on. Okay, town manager updates, Mr. Tom.
Thank you. Uh, I am working with Yanko, the town planner, and Berkshire Regional Planning Commission on a community meeting regarding digital access and digital equity. Uh, this is federal money coming down, and, um, we've agreed to let the RPC take the lead, they're doing all the organizing and groundwork on this, we just have to help them create a community meeting, uh, which we will probably have here, and seniors may be the greatest beneficiaries of, um, what can come out of this digital equity program. Uh, the RPC is the lead with the town supplying the venue and publicity. Uh, we'll be meeting this week to organize the community meeting. Our new emergency management director, J.D. Hebert, is working on a possible mutual aid agreement with neighboring towns. Such agreements are common for police and fire, but apparently there's nothing similar for emergency management. The group working on the condemnation fund is meeting again July twenty-fourth. We're close to having a comprehensive plan, and we'll bring it to you soon with some policy recommendations for decisions that we need to help shape the program. The Department of Utilities just came out with new rules that would allow Dalton to offer more products in its aggregation program, uh, for example, a hundred percent green energy, without going to the Department of Public Utilities for approval. Our requests to offer a hundred percent green option has been stuck in the state process for years, so this could speed that up. We're still unsure about what will be required to move those products forward, though, so I'll have more to report as the questions raised by the rulemaking are resolved. They have a complex process for approving options that consumers can buy into. They're realizing that they don't need to, which is good. The solar project of Citizens Energy will be paying personal property taxes instead of negotiating a pilot for their solar project. We've been trying to negotiate a pilot for six months, but the process broke down between our two lawyers. The silver lining is that from what I've been given to understand from our town council, the property tax process grew, while a bit more cumbersome for both parties, it's likely to net the town more money.
Tom?
Yeah.
Opinion about property taxes, and while we had a solar panel project over there, on the land that, uh, the Warren's own, that sort of project is going to be, right? Okay, this project is going to be built on the Warren.
Yeah, the taxes will be...
And the deal was, when the, uh, planning board issued them a special permit, that before anything starts, that they pay the back taxes on the Warren property. Has that been forthcoming?
It's in process, yes.
It's in the process?
They're in touch with Dawn and finding out exactly how much they own, that's...
Okay.
Yeah.
Just checking.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Dalton is finishing its stint as the lead town in the twenty-twenty Federal Community Development Block Grant Program, which focuses on housing rehabilitation. We've been part of a consortium of four towns, Dalton, Beckett, Stockbridge, and Sheffield. There's just one more job to do in Stockbridge, and the current CDBG grant will be complete. After that, Beckett will take over being the lead town for the next few years, meaning their administrator and accountant will be responsible for monitoring the RPC's work in housing rehabilitation and any other eligible work. Uh, I met on Wednesday with Bob Bishop, uh, Fire Chief Tobin, and Water Commissioner Cam Cashay regarding Dalton Fire District plans to secure the Dalton Garage. They've been working with the owners and have decided to present a plan to buy the building. They realized this would have to be approved by the voters, but believe they are ready to make that proposal. They also said that they would be interested in working with the town, as the amount of space available, about thirteen thousand square feet, was more than they needed, though they would still have to construct a separate bay, uh, for the larger engines. But we'll bring you more information on that when we have it, it's an interesting development. I'll be meeting with the accountant and town treasurer later this week to prepare a second round of rescissions to ARPA products, uh, actually, I'll probably be meeting with them next week. To prepare a second round of rescissions to ARPA product, projects, uh, which will also clarify a more exact amount that is still available for spending by the end of December. I'm just staying on top of that process so that we get everything that we, uh, got allotted to us.
When Tony was talking about the different sums of money we would have to come up with at a special town meeting, did anybody catch a total?
Did any, I'm sorry?
Did anyone compute a total?
Um, he did not present one, it's on the order of, it's, it's a, it's a fair amount of money, it's, I think, think in terms of seventy-five thousand dollars, out of the roughly one-hundred-and-seventy-five that we have left.
So, in ARPA funds?
And, and I know that we said we would use, uh, a significant portion of that, because we're engineering for the, uh, Town Hall project. So, yeah, we, we, in order, this is why we have to start getting the numbers down on paper, and...
But by paying for the, the fees... But by paying for the fees for the solar project, not the solar, other one, for the solar project, we would negate the need for a town meeting?
Well, we would negate, if, if we, if we pay for that, the, the purpose of the special town meeting would be mainly in case in mid-September, we find out that we have substantially fewer people actually planning to attend the occasional schools, we could potentially take hundreds of thousands of dollars off our budget for FY twenty five. That said, there's a very narrow window for us to have a special town meeting, given the elections and the work of the town clerk's office has to do with those elections. We would essentially have to vote the warrant on, on September twenty third, at the September twenty third meeting with a town meeting date of October seventh, being two weeks from that. So we, we'd have to vote and get it posted more than, it has to be two weeks. So maybe we could fit in a special meeting or something like that if we had to, but we won't know until mid-September whether or not we would have that more or less drive in a special town meeting. Other than that, there are relatively small requests, which might not be worth a special town meeting, especially with the town clerk dealing with a September third and a November fifth election, primary election.
Yeah. That was my goal, avoid one if possible, but if that possible, though, they have to make it work.
Yeah. It's if, if it would be worth it to the town to take a substantial amount of money out of the FY twenty five budget. That, that would be the purpose.
All right. Keep us posted.
Yeah. Lower the tax bills. All right. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tom? Okay. Future agenda items. Any new ones? Okay. Items that anticipated forty eight hours before the meeting. Remarks of the select board. Okay. Then it's to us announcements. Remember Saturday, it's our second Dalton day, July twentieth, from one to five, right offside here, with a car show from eleven AM to three PM. Visit town website for more details.
If I may, AUSA, how many people do we have signed up as exhibitors?
I believe we have fifty three.
Wow.
Crafted, who vendors businesses.
Only for a third double what was last year.
Which is about double what we had last year.
Nice. Car show is going to be right out here, but it's only going to be in the AM. So all those people in the car show are going to leave.
Well, it goes to three.
Okay. So they, two functions will overlap.
Yes.
How many people you got signed up for the car show?
He said twenty, twenty five cars.
That's good.
That's a lot of work. Thank you for doing all that.
Yeah. Great.
Okay. Want to know what's more about happening in Dalton, sign up for a monthly newsletter. Did we get a note, did we get a name for it yet?
I don't think so.
We've gotten one submission.
One submission?
We got one submission.
I didn't submit anything. You submitted. You liked it. I received it. So go for it.
Yeah. Maybe that's it.
So we'll, we'll, yeah, I consider a nice newsletter, that's it.
That's it.
Okay. Do it.
All right.
Okay. Annual car permits, bag stickers and recycle only car permits are available for purchase at transfer station or on the town's website. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The Dalton Housing Authority has one vacancy on their board. Must be a Dalton resident. Please contact Sue Gregory at six eight four two fourth nine three for more information. Is your electricity bill too high? The town is contracted with Colonial Power to provide an electrical plan for the town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiation, which has resulted in prices lower than current Eversource prices. Please note, this might not always be the case. For more details or to opt out or opt in, visit town's website or call the town manager's office. The town of Dalton currently has three job opportunities, a part-time COA van driver, EPW equipment operator and a principal assessment. Visit the town website or contact the town manager's office at four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two oh two for more information. Our next meeting of select board is scheduled for Monday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty four, at seven PM, right here at the senior center. And with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Dalton. Thank you.